I'd like to welcome you to our March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, could we please stand for our invocation? We're very grateful to have Pastor Delbert Rogers with us again from Champion Baptist Church. If you'll please remain standing after the invocation for the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank for this occasion, and we would ask you now to meet with the council members, with the mayor, with these folks that you'll give us your wisdom. We pray you'll help us to make the decisions that would best guide our city. And, Father, we ask your blessing on all the proceeding tonight, for we pray in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with
Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
At this time, do we have any agenda updates?
There's no changes to the agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. There are no presentations tonight, so we will move directly to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on the agenda is provided this opportunity. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and we will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Sharon Daniels?
Thank you for your time. Sharon Daniels, eighteen thirty-five Castleton Drive, St. Cloud. I am the HOA vice president for Lancaster Park East. Our subdivision was completed back in November, end of October. However, in our fourth phase, which is off of Nova Road and Dumbleton, has some serious infrastructure issues. The roads flood very seriously when it comes to rain. We haven't gotten any answers from Lennar, and we haven't gotten any answers from the city of St. Cloud, and we need to know what's going to be done to rectify the issue.
Do you have anything else to add?
Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, our public works department's looked at this. We have a letter of credit from Lennar Homes. They've ordered the material to correct the flooding issue in the area, and they expect to complete that work within six weeks. And if they don't, we'll complete the work, and we'll bill them for it.
Within six weeks?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's what I have from them.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Kelly, is that Coamory?
Comey.
Is there a Kelly here? Please step forward and straighten me out on your last name here.
Comey. Forget the A. So, I live at...
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Kelly Comey, thirty...
Sorry about that.
Thirty-six zero-nine Bay Court. I was wondering if we could get crosswalks on Budinger, like the kind with lights, how they have downtown Kissimmee and Neptune Road. I did speak with somebody about this recently. I don't think he's here, a public works guy. There's a lot of traffic on that road. The elementary school exits from the right. They push everybody to the right, and we go that way. And it's fair to the hospital. However, nobody acknowledges the kids. There's two schools on that road. You're building apartments at the top of the road, the hospitals at the other side of the road, which means ambulances go fast. It's a cut-through street. We've got multiple city parks right there. Peghorn Park, Skateboard Park, BMX Park, baseball fields, public pool, all city complexes. Family-oriented place, overflow from the baseball fields is back there. All I want is the push button, the LED lights for that crosswalk. My daughter was in the middle of the street crossing the road. There was nobody around. Somebody came down the road like two days ago, probably sixty-six. In the middle of the street, my child and her father, this car did not even stop, didn't even slam the brakes, didn't even notice them. It's every day. The people drop off their kids to the elementary school, they don't even stop. As we're walking to the elementary school, you would think they would acknowledge us. They don't. All I want is just to push a button and have it lit up. Is that something that we can do? Like, how long?
Do you have any other comments at this point?
No.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. First off, in the short term, we've asked our law enforcement to go out and do some education and then some enforcement. Secondly, we've reached out to the school safety team, make sure they're involved in this decision. And lastly, I've asked Mr. Edwards to look at how we get that crosswalk put in.
That's who I was talking to. Don Edwards.
Gentleman right there in the orange tie. So, yes, ma'am, thank you for reaching out. We did not know that, and we'll get you taken care of.
It's really bad.
I can't give you a timeline until he does his assessment, but we'll be glad to get that done for you.
About two weeks.
Sure. Mayor, may Mr. Edwards be recognized?
Sure, you may.
Don Edwards, Public Works Director. I've asked the deputy...
Pull the mic up a little bit.
I've asked the deputy Public Works Director to get a price for the crosswalk that she's looking for when we go and get prices for Nolte, Nolte Road, when we do those crosswalks. So, try to combine that into the project.
Thank you, Don. Joanna Robinson?
I'm here with some other of my... I'm here with my neighbors, and we're from Lennar Lancaster Phase Four. We have some concerns in regards to the road, but I've heard previously mentioned that the roads will be fixed. The concerns is that the roads are being spongy. Water is coming up from the roads. The roads are splitting. It's now splitting to the point that it's going and affecting people's driveway, their homes, and we're not sure what's happening under the roads. City of St. Cloud and other workers came and cut open the roads. Now more water is coming up through the roads, and people are concerned because we're not sure what type of activity is happening. Nobody's answering any questions, and we would like to know how the council would be able to assist us, get this matter resolved right away, because they've came over and over and over again, and the situation is not being resolved. We have a builder who's pointing their fingers at the city and the city pointing their fingers at the builder, but we need to figure out what's going on with our roads so that it don't affect our homes.
Yes, ma'am.
And we would like to know if somebody's gonna seriously come out, take an assessment of it, run some tests, and find out what really is happening so that it could resolve, solve it immediately, and not in a month, two months, three months, but immediately, right away, so that we are not in danger, our homes don't crumble or fall. We're asking for your support and your help.
Mr. Sturgeon again.
Again, that's what we're doing. Lennar Homes has agreed to fix that. They've ordered the supplies to do that. They're gonna have to put in a new drainage system. And again, if they don't follow through on that, we do have a letter of credit, and we'll do it and then charge them.
And when you say fix that, that includes the road as well? Because I have Ms. Frances Barrito, her home and driveway started to be damaged personally. She's here, and this damage has ran up past the gutter, splitting water is running up from out the roadside to her personal, into her driveway, cracking, going up.
Yes, ma'am.
With water shooting going up to her home.
Our public works department is investigating the situation. He's well aware of what's going on, and we've been working with the engineer record to make those repairs.
Okay, so you're saying in six weeks, this will all be solved?
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll have new roads, everything repaired and fixed?
Ma'am, it will be addressed.
Excuse me?
Ma'am, the city will follow up and will address the issue, I think.
So, who do we communicate in regards to the situation going forward?
You can contact my office, the city manager's office.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes.
Okay.
And I can give you a card.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Frances Barretto or Barrett?
Yeah. I was here for the same issue.
Same thing?
It's okay.
Thank you. We're gonna be on that one. Thank you. Is this Ben Schumaker?
Hi, I'm Ben Schumaker. Do I need to address thirteen seventeen Bellers Circle Orlando, Florida? As you know, I'm with American Homes for Rent. I just wanted to bring up an issue because I got a call on the way here, actually, from my development team. We have Skylake subdivision that we're under development on, and we had a long time ago, when Andres was here, there's a mulch trail that goes through the subdivision, an eight-foot mulch trail. It's supposed to be interconnectivity throughout the subdivision, and we had talked to him about making an asphalt trail because we thought that was more sustainable and would be a better overall fix. So, he had said yes. There was some confusion. We put in the bid with the subcontractor, never got adjusted on the plans. We put in an asphalt trail at a higher expense and thought a better thing. They, staff, I think to avoid going through another plan, wants us to put mulch on top of the asphalt trail to meet the condition. We've almost started to do that this week, but it's washed, it would've washed out into the ponds. We just hopefully get some clarification so we don't have to go through a whole plan change to... We're almost done with the subdivision. It seems like it would make sense to do the asphalt trail and not put mulch on it, but I just was hoping maybe I could get some clarity from staff or maybe you guys to say, hey, sounds like good to have an asphalt trail instead of mulch on top of it.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Does anybody, Melissa or Stephanie have...
It sounds like this is something we need to work out at the staff level, to look at the approvals and...
It says, it calls for a mulch trail.
No doubt it does. I just don't have any in front of, anything in front of me, Mr. Schumaker, so we certainly can look at it and then address it and see.
Well, just all these other people have come up, so I figured I'd just try. Saying always got good results.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I would like to state my preference is never allow a mulch trail. That would be my preference. It washes away. It's a nightmare. Doesn't last. I don't know. It came up as some idea somewhere along the way. Someone's like, oh, well, I don't know, but it, I would like my preference that we never allow that, just if there was a way to do that.
Second.
Got a second? Think you'll get a third and a fourth on that one. Anything else, Mr. Trace?
No, I just, as long as it's a part of the drainage calculation, because that's more impervious, so as long as they've got it figured out, I'm perfectly fine with the asphalt trail.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak during the citizens forum? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they will have the same opportunity. First of all, are there any items that council is wanting to address? Councilmember Matheny?
I want to pull item A for a separate vote.
All right, we'll address item A to start with. Ms. Matheny?
Thank you. This was on our last agenda, and it got pulled, but I kind of gave a preview of my feeling about it. I don't like the mass grating of seventy-plus acres and wiping all the trees out. I understand they want to fill it four feet, but I just feel like there wasn't a whole lot of consideration to the existing trees. Also, it concerned me in the agenda, it said that after the mass grating, there would have an arborist review the trees to determine which ones would stay, and I'm like, well, it's too late. You've mass graded it. So, yeah, I want to vote on this separately, because I'm not in support of it.
Would anyone else on the council like to speak to this item? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Ben Schumaker. I'm with AMH Development, American Homes for Rent, thirteen seventeen Bellers Circle Orlando, Florida. We are asking for this mass grading permit to go forward because we've had a challenge. This project was originally approved as a PSP in Osceola County in two thousand and nineteen of June. Currently, this mass grade permit is consistent with the site construction plans that we have submitted in December, that we have yet to receive comments on. We know staff's been overwhelmed. We've been waiting for final approvals for the FMP, the PSP, the PMP, all that's appeared before this board several times. The developers that stayed in the county and that were developing their sites are under construction, the surrounding sites, who had PSPs approved in the county almost a year later after we did. We have chose to work with, you know, the St. Cloud. We have been happy with the outcome, and we think we're doing a good job of working with them. But we were told, and I had the emails, that we are gonna have this site construction plan approved after we got our PMP, FMP, to submit it after October twenty-eighth. We did do that. We have yet to receive comments on our site construction plans. Our site, we have a, we have a St. John's Water Management District permit, so in order to help alleviate some of the pressure on staff in terms of their review process, we have asked for the mass grading permit, which is consistent with every plan we submitted. As far as filling the site, the sites around are being filled. The school board site will need to be filled. All the sites are dictated by the ground-level water. We are only impacting seventy acres of the areas. We've computed tree calculations based on the whole area. We have complied with the code. You can't, the trees we've saved on the perimeter and in other areas are trees we can save, and we are full compliance with all the code. So, we would ask for your assistance to allow us to start moving forward on this. You know, it's getting at a point where with the delay, if you want to really talk about what the costs are, site PVC pipe over the last nine months has gone up sixty percent. So, on the project of this size, I mean, we always talk about what it costs. We could have been under construction in the county earlier, and we would have saved one point two million dollars on this site just in order to make PVC upfront. So, we want to do the right thing. The mass grading permit will allow us to get, go forward on a previously approved plan. They're consistent with the site construction plans, who your staff, your staff has, which plans your staff has and have reviewed, and I think that they're consistent with that, and we've approved everything else. So, respectfully, I'm sorry, I'm a little... Respectfully, we would ask that you allow us to keep moving forward at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have further discussion in our motion by council.
Motion to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-two thirty-eight R.
We have a motion for the approval of Resolution two thousand and twenty-two oh thirty-eight R. Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Brings us to the remaining items on the agenda, items B through E. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to any of these items? If not, we'll have discussion in our motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Brings us to public hearings. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number one?
Final public hearing for ordinance number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-nine, an ordinance of the city council, the city of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing the proposed property known as Roan Bridge, and further described herein in recognizing the Roan Bridge Community Development District created and chartered by Uniform General Law and Uniform Community Development District Act of Florida, Chapter one ninety, Florida statutes two thousand and one and hereafter, acknowledging the uniform district charter expressed in Sections one ninety point zero six dash one ninety point zero four-one Florida statutes, and as referenced and provided by Section one ninety point zero zero four subsection four Florida statutes, and confirmed by Section one eighty-nine point zero thirty-one subsection three Florida statutes establishing the district on the property proposed in this petition and designated the initial members of the district board of supervisors, and recognizing the designation of the powers of the district providing for servability and effective date.
Good evening. Melissa Dunkland, Community Development Director. The case before you tonight is for the establishment of the Roan Bridge Community Development District, generally located west of Old Hickory Tree Road and south of East Nineteenth Street. The subject property is approximately two hundred and seventy-six acres. The Uniform Community Development District Act permits the creation of community development districts for the provision of community development services and facilities. The applicant is petitioning to establish a CDD for the Roan Bridge mixed-use development. The purpose of the CDD will be to plant, finance, construct, operate, and maintain community-wide infrastructure and services specifically for the benefit of its residents. The Roan Bridge CDD provides enhancements beyond the land development code requirements, which include entry enhancements, open space enhancements, parks, and amenity center, that includes a pool with cabana and restrooms and a totlot, landscaping enhancements, and the petitioner has agreed to provide two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards a acquisition of a fire truck. This request meets the intent for the strategic planned goals of growth management and infrastructure. DRCN staff has reviewed this request and recommends approval. Likewise, it has requested that city council approve ordinance number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-nine. The applicant is available and has a presentation for you tonight as well.
If the applicant would like to step forward and make a presentation at this time, you're invited to do so.
Thank you, council. Joe Brown with the law firm Cutac Rock, one oh seven West College Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida. I also have with me Mr. James Dix, who is the developer on the project and the petitioner representative. I'll go quickly through these slides, some of the information Melissa's already touched on. I'm sure some of it you're probably already familiar with. I won't belabor the point, and then if there are any questions, Mr. Dix and I are happy to try and answer them. Oh, I have the paper. Top button. So, what is a CDD? You probably all know this, but it's a local unit of special-purpose government. It is a governmental entity. Chapter one ninety is the statutory charter. It prescribes all the powers and how a CDD operates, and the whole purpose of CDDs is to provide a mechanism to finance and construct infrastructure and then provide long-term maintenance for that infrastructure. What isn't a CDD? By statute, a CDD is not a development or land use decision or a development order. That is explicitly excluded by statute from the scope of what Chapter one ninety is and from the criteria that are considered in determining whether to establish a district. Anything a CDD does is going to be controlled by all of your local governmental powers with respect to zoning, land use, et cetera. The Roan Bridge master plan, approximately six hundred and twenty-five single-family units, five hundred and ninety-nine multifamily, and a hundred thousand square feet of commercial space are planned for the development within the district. In terms of the infrastructure the district is proposing to provide, it's estimated at about thirty-four million dollars in infrastructure. Melissa's already touched on the types of infrastructure we're talking about, pretty standard stuff, with the exception of some of the fire protection improvements that the district is proposing to supply. You've already seen the approximate location and the acreage for this project. The advantages of a CDD, you know, really the main advantages of a CDD are, one, its ability to finance the improvements of the issuance of municipal bonds, which are secured by special assessments levied just on the property within the boundaries of the district based on the benefit to that land from the improvements that are provided. It's a very stable mechanism for financing the improvements and maintaining them. Special assessments can go on the tax roll and be collected by the tax collector, along with city and county school board taxes. We've seen in the past firsthand, at the last economic downturn, that communities with CDDs by and large fared much better through the oh-six to late two thousands than communities just with an HOA, because CDDs have a more stable ability to collect assessments, to continue to fund and maintain and construct improvements within their, within their boundaries. CDDs obviously are also a public entity, subject to public records requirements, sunshine law. It's a very transparent process, competitive bidding in addition from the get-go as compared to development by just a private entity or when you have an HOA involved. I've already touched on some of these. There are some additional requirements that are specific to CDDs, annual audit requirements, website with information about the district that's required by statute, and required to provide the district's proposed budget to the city before its final adoption. In terms of future property owners, there are advantages there as well. The cheaper financing makes entry into a community that has a CDD generally more affordable because the financing is less expensive and the costs are amortized over typically a thirty-year period. So, if you move into a community, you're paying for that infrastructure, but you're paying for it over a longer period of time and only while you live there. So, if you're in a community for ten years, you're not paying for all that infrastructure that was put in upfront as part of the purchase price. You're just paying your share as time goes by. Generally, CDDs are able to provide a higher level of service than alternatives and have, again, increased accountability, which is, I think, a positive for future residents, again, sunshine laws, public records, and the like. In terms of benefits for the city and the broader community, again, it's a public entity. The facilities the district owns, including parks and green spaces, are public parks and green spaces as compared to if they were owned by an HOA, for example. And again, I think it's better for the community at large and the city to have an entity, a stable entity, a more stable entity, like a CDD in place as opposed to a homeowners' association in the event that there is another situation like we had in the mid to late two thousands. Protections for the CDD, the bonds issued by the district are only the district's. They're, they're not an obligation of the city. The district doesn't have any ability to assess outside its boundaries on other property, including any property owned by the, by the city itself. As I mentioned, the city retains all of its zoning and permitting and land use authorities and powers. All these same benefits I've been talking about are also benefits in the eyes of a developer. So, it's obviously the financing tool and having the mechanism there to allow you to put in potentially more infrastructure or greater infrastructure than you would otherwise because of the financing tool that a CDD provides. In addition, we frequently find that water management districts, for example, prefer to have a CDD in place in recognition of the kind of things I'm talking about as compared to an HOA when you're maintaining things long-term that might be subject to a water management district permit. So, in summary, I won't belabor it, but all those things I'm talking about are the kind of benefits that are offered. In this case in particular with respect to the city, as reflected in the petitioner's agreement and the proposed interlocal that the district would enter into, the district is, and the petitioner between the two of them, are proposing to provide greater than necessary transportation improvements and water sewer improvements than needed just for this development. In addition, the petitioner's agreement reflects a commitment to dedicate a two-point-five-acre site for a future firehouse, and the district is proposing to provide two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as part of its initial bond issue to the city in cooperation to help the city purchase a fire truck to serve the area and the development. Meats and potatoes of actual establishment. By statute, there are only six factors that are considered when determining to grant or deny a petition for establishment, whether all the statements in the petition are found to be true and correct, whether the establishment of the CDD is inconsistent with any applicable element or portion of the comp plans, whether the size of the district is sufficiently compact and contiguous to be developable as one functionally in a related community, whether the CDD is the best alternative for delivering the community development services and facilities we're talking about tonight, and whether the community development service facility of the CDD will be incompatible with the capacity or uses of any of the existing improvements around the proposed development, and whether the area that'll be served by the CDD is amenable to separate special district government. Again, specifically by statute, this is, it sometimes gets confusing, I find, but this is not a land use decision, and only those elements as prescribed by statute are relevant to the establishment decision. In summary, we believe that the materials you have before you demonstrate satisfaction of the six statutory criteria for establishment, as reflected by the material in the petition, as reflected by the written testimony that we've submitted addressing those statutory criteria, and as reflected by the city staff's recommendation to grant the petition for establishment. And with that, I'll introduce Mr. Dixon, let him talk to you for a minute.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, council members. My name is James Dix, 103 Commerce Street, Lake Mary, Florida. And Joe, Joe said he'd be brief, so that's pretty brief, trust me. I think he wants to get back to Tallahassee, so I'll be brief as well. I just wanted to take just a quick minute because I know you guys have a lot of developers that come through, and you probably don't even get the opportunity to meet the actual developer. So I always joke around and, I'm not from New York City. I'm from Plant City. So I've been here my entire life, seventh-generation Floridian. My family's developed over 65 different projects in Orlando area since 1983. I've been doing this my whole life, basically right out of high school. I always joke, I tried to do college. I went to community college about 10 years, it didn't work out too well. So then I went in the Marine Corps, and that pretty much straightened everything else out. So then I got back and started doing developments specifically in this area. And so we're really excited about this. And I really wanted to kind of just talk a little bit more about, get this straight, here we go. That's what the point is, I'm up. Oh, well, we could probably skip that one, too. I am, I do a lot of stuff right here locally as well. I am the president of the Osceola County Sheriff's Foundation, so I do a lot of work with law enforcement in the area as well. And quite frankly, I believe that we foster a great relationship here with staff in the city and looking forward to that. This is a big project, it's going to be around a long time. And I think we've gotten some tremendous feedback. You've noticed we've been on, we've been off, we've been on, but that's simply because we're taking some great feedback and we're working well with staff. And, you know, they've had some concerns, we've addressed those. Been working real well with Chief Miller as well, trying to, you know, accomplish some of the things that he wants to accomplish that maybe we don't necessarily have to, but we want to be good stewards. As far as our developments, we're real specific about that. I mean, I develop projects that I'm proud to take my family through, that I can drive back through 20 years from now and say, you know, we did that project. I think this is definitely one of those. I think we've encompassed a lot of those. This has been on the board since 2017. We've made a lot of amendments and adjustments specifically based on some of the comments that we've gotten, working together. So really excited about where we're having to bring to you. Now, I wanted to just mention on the CDD, and Joe touched base on that, but I'm a big proponent for CDDs because without them, the end users paying another $25,000 to $30,000 for their house. And most people in Florida don't stay in their home for 25 or 30 years. They're either moving up or moving down. That's the nature of what we have in Florida. And the CDD really allows them to take advantage of that and amortize that cost over 30 years and only pay specifically for the time that they're in there. And even further, if they decide, hey, I'm not going to move, I'm going to be here for 30 years, no problem, they actually have the option at closing to go ahead and pay for their debt service upfront. They don't have to worry about that ever again. So they have those options. We like to use those when we can, and some of those reasons are, you know, what Joe said. Again, you know, we've had about 4,000 lots around the state now. We basically are from coast to coast with over 1,000 multifamily units. And we've got about 50,000 square feet of office space alone and 70,000 square feet of commercial. So we've got four major projects, and this one's probably one of the smaller ones. We definitely wanted to really make an impact. So the theme of the whole project, you're probably familiar, I mean, Roan Bridge, Roan is the color of a horse, so the theme is basically a horse farm, so to speak. If you're familiar with Steeplechase, that's up in Lake Mary. I did all the entitlements for that project years back, and we maintained that same thing. Taylor Morrison built it out. It's a very successful product. And we're going to kind of take the same kind of concept, you know, with cross fencing and so forth, and you'll see some of the stone entry features. Traffic circles, we love traffic circles, especially as a Marine being overseas. Learned that it's much more efficient, and so obviously it's nice to see that. We wanted to incorporate that here as well. Plenty of landscaping along the boulevards. We have two major thoroughfares that are going through the project, and they'll ultimately connect through additional roadway systems, I think from Nolte to Orange and to Furtick and to Old Hickory. So it's going to be a nice cross-section, and in the middle will be the community center. This is actually a cutout of what the actual boulevard will look, including internal streets with plenty of parking and additional parking on the internal streets as well. And so what we did was, we went through, taking some great feedback, and instead of having all these little drainage retention areas all over, we created a 14-acre pond with a 1-acre site that's open to the entire community to be able to come out and utilize that for whatever they want, kayaking, canoeing, or whatever. And it also is surrounded by some of the wetland features, and we've actually carved out a 2.5-acre space for the fire station. Ultimately, that'll be down in that location. Chief Miller and I spoke probably a year ago, specifically asking what his needs were. And one of the things he said he wanted was he wanted to be somewhere where he could shoot his fire hoses out there over the water. So we made sure that we took that into account. But that's kind of one of the things, you know, we've asked staff, what do you need? What do you want? What would you like to accomplish? What are some of those pain points? And if we can do it, we'll do it. I mean, if we can't, we'll definitely tell you and why we can't, and then we try to meet in the middle, come up with something great. And I think that that's what we have here. This is the lake that I was talking about, and there's some cutouts here. You have this in your paperwork, so you'll be able to see that. We're super excited about it. It's kind of one of those things, wish we would have thought about it to begin with, but it does make a lot of sense to roll all that into one. It's a great feature that we came up with. And then we have, this is, is this mine?
No, that's not George's.
Yeah, I'm done, okay. I was about to say, okay, and we have, I'm not really sure what we have. Anyway, I really appreciate your time, open to any questions. I just wanted you to meet me. I'm here, I'm hands-on, my hands are in the dirt. I'm out there right now, farming, cutting hay. So if you want to see me, that's where I'll be at. Thank you for your time.
All right. If you'll hang around just a minute, we may have some questions. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? You need to come up to the mic, state your name, address for the record. When you finish, you need to fill out a form for the clerk. You need to come to the mic, state your name and address.
Dawn Middleton, 1330 Beachwood Drive, St. Cloud. So I have a question. What about the road? What about Old Hickory Tree Road?
Ma'am, up here.
Oh, okay.
Speak to us.
What about Old Hickory Tree Road? Are they going to do something with the traffic? It's already getting bombarded with the school and the light and everything. And then also, are they going to put sidewalks in down there?
You have any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Dix, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, sir.
Sidewalks?
Well, first of all, yes, we're going to put sidewalks in, of course, obviously within the infrastructure and on the outside of the property. But more importantly, in reference to the road issues, I mean, those are things we're going to work directly with staff during the developer agreement process. And I personally have seen the traffic there, especially on drop-off and pickups. And so, you know, for instance, I know our off-site improvements will have turning lanes and so forth, so that'll alleviate some of that as well. But that's something during the developer agreements process, that if we can create any efficiencies, we will certainly do that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council at this time. Mr. Ranzares.
I just want to point some out quickly. So this agreement, I mean, I'm sorry, this item includes the approval of the CDD, but it also includes the approval of a petitioner's agreement, which Mr. Brown mentioned to you. So in front of you, you'll see some slip pages that were put in place, put in front of you to look at. Those are changes to the petitioner's agreement that were made since the last time this came in front of the City Council and before tonight. Those changes are, they were described in Mr. Brown's presentation as well as Melissa's presentation. Those are the ones that address the contribution of the developer towards the firefighter, fire truck, as well as the transportation improvements and the utility improvements that were being talked about and the need for a future developer's agreement to address those. That's what those changes do, and they solidify the fire site and the fire truck contribution that they talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Ranzares. Do we have any discussion from the council? Councilmember Trace.
And these weren't striked or underlined, so is this, the highlighted sections are just completely being added?
Yes, sir.
They weren't in there before?
Yes, sir.
That's fine. So question kind of sort of unrelated to this. The way for us to alleviate the traffic on Old Hickory Tree Road is to have an alternate route. And we've got Orange that will be a very nice four-lane road with dead end on both sides, not connected to anything. Is there any way we can put a plan together to make sure that the connections happen over the next couple of years before this thing gets built out? I don't think it's, it's an off-site improvement, so I don't think it's obligation for the developer to do, but as the city start making some of these roadway connections, we've got plenty of mobility funds, let's make it happen.
I'll let Erin add to this if she needs to, but the next step would be to enter into a developer's agreement. And one of the things that we will be requesting is that those connections, and we will provide mobility fee credits for any improvements that are providing any additional capacity.
But then off-site pieces, I mean,
Correct, yeah, so.
I want the road to connect from
Right, right.
One way to the other.
Right, for those connections, we would have to provide the mobility fee credit.
Okay. And is there something more forward that we can do with the neighboring property owners that reach out to them and get, start acquiring right away?
I'm going to allow Erin to comment on that because this is her area of expertise.
Perfect.
Thanks, Erin Stark, Transportation Manager. I examined the opportunities for connections, and the challenges that we have in extending those connections off-site is the available right-of-way. So although we desire to have a four-lane facility connecting all the way up to 192, we don't already have the right-of-way in place to require the developer to make those improvements. So that's going to be something that only the city can do, the advanced acquisition of that right-of-way. So if you all desire for us to focus on a specific corridor, we can do that. I know the direction when this project got their mixed-use approvals was to focus on Furtick and Orange. I also understand with the turnpike to the south connection off of Nolte that that may be an opportunity as well. But in all directions, in all ways, right-of-way acquisition is necessary. So that can be a next step for the city. I know that on Old Hickory Tree, that's a county facility, they are requiring right-of-way with every single development city or county that comes forward off of that corridor for a four-lane facility in the future. So they're doing, they're not requiring the dedication now, but they're requiring the reservation of that area so that when they do the dedication, that it will be not taking any building or parking or leaving any site non-conforming. So that is the next step, is to focus on which corridor is most important and dedicate those acquisition funds to that. So if you have any direction for staff regarding what's most important or if you want a traffic study to define what's most important, that's the path we can take.
Okay. I mean, to me, what's most important is making all those roadway connections that are on our mobility master plan. And this doing, I'd say 70% of getting there, just we need those other segments, so reaching out to those property owners, seeing what we can do. And then, you know, there's eminent domain powers, too, to make that connection because there's no way, even if you try to four-lane Old Hickory Tree, that's just going to be a nightmare for the four years it takes for that to happen. We need that alternate route to then try to go in and widen that road, or else you're just not going to be able to get to school.
Yeah, and I think in preparation for the developer's agreement, a traffic study is necessary. This project has not produced a traffic study yet. But, you know, that was the precursor to defining what those corridors were for Center Lake Ranch and lots of other facilities, was that comprehensive traffic study. So we're at a point where that's the next step.
Okay. And then on the amenity side of things, so it wasn't in there before, but it's in this new, the whole title of it, but the recreational amenities, they are going above and beyond current code with landscape, hardscape, amenities, all that. I did see it in this new handout that was just handed out, and I just wanted to make sure that was kind of on the record. But that's all my comments for now.
Do you have a comment, Melissa?
Yes, I don't know that we specifically defined exactly what those landscape enhancements will be, but as part of this approval, when subsequent applications come in for review, we will ensure that it's above and beyond the minimum requirements of the Land Development Code.
And no mulch trails.
Absolutely not.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So that was my concern when we got the agenda packet, and I don't, I mean, I haven't read these papers that were on our desk here completely, but I still felt like it was super vague in the package, like it still just says, yeah, we're going to do it. It is going to be better than what we have to do, but there wasn't any kind of like, is it going to be, are you going to spend $1 million more than what you have to do? Are you going to spend, you know what I mean? Like, there just wasn't detail enough for me to go, what exactly are you doing? Everything was just like, we'll design this in a future phase. We're going to give you an amenity, it's going to be better than what you had to get by code, but there's really no details, which we've been saying every single time this has come before us, that there wasn't any details. So that's frustrating to me. The, it was just mentioned in the summary that, you know, it was going to, I think the term we used was preserve a 2.5-acre site for a future fire station, but we're giving them impact fee credits for that. So, you know, they're not donating that, that's, they're just going to, we're going to buy it with impact fee credits. And the other thing, I was curious, it sounds good when you have the slide that says $34 million worth of infrastructure, but what's the number that exceeds what you would have had to done for the development? Because a lot of those items in there, the water and sewer, the road, I mean, that's the cost of development. So out of the $34 million, what's, what are we getting above and beyond? Like, what the cost of the development is? I mean, I want to help you out here, and I want to, you know, have a really high-quality development, and I've been pretty consistent every time it's come, like, I need details. And I still don't feel like there's details. Now, if I missed it in the application, somebody correct me. I just felt like it was a lot of vague, better than what the requirements are. So I appreciate the fact that as future applications and products come into the city, the city will do its level best to try to get it, but we're already pregnant at that point, so our leverage is gone. I don't know how the rest of you feel about those items.
Well, and that was a concern on the staff side, too. That's why the petitioner's agreement includes these provisions that refer to a future, essentially, developer's agreement with the developer that will come back in front of the City Council to address many of the specific development items that you're talking about right now. So you will have another chance to look at this when the more of the particulars are in place.
But we'll already have agreed to allow them to have a CDD.
Yes, but again, the CDD, as pointed out, that's more, that's a legislative decision, that's not a land use or development decision. So really, what you're looking at now is whether it meets the criteria in the statute that was presented to you. So it's just a mechanism to do that. If the CDD is created, then the development doesn't get the approvals that the development needs to move forward, the CDD is just basically going to be a, it's not going to do anything. It's not going to provide any, they're not going to be able to do the development, or they're not going to want to do the development.
I don't know, I have a real hard time approving things when I don't really know what exactly we're going to get.
Do we have any other discussion? Well, I certainly think you have done what the law says to get your CDD approved, but you're obviously going to be held at feet to the fire with coming through on what, you know, the amenities are. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this item and move forward. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Trace, a motion for the mayor. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we read Items Two and Three.
First reading introduction for Ordinance Number 2022-07, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of private institutional to approximately 4.84 acres, identified as Pennant Park, located on Old Canoe Creek Road, south of Mesa Verde Drive and north of Mutter Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability, copies on file and effective date. First reading introduction for Ordinance Number 2022-08, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 4.84 acres, identified as Pennant Park, from a single-family district RE to a professional P zoning designation with a private institutional future land use designation adopted by Ordinance Number 2022-07, generally located on Old Canoe Creek Road, south of Mesa Verde Drive and north of Mutter Road, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Community Development Director. This request is for a comprehensive plan amendment for Pennant Park. The property consists of approximately 4.84 acres, generally located east of Old Canoe Creek Road and south of Mesa Verde Drive. The current future land use
The current future land use of this property is low-density residential, and the proposed future land use is private institutional. Staff has analyzed this request and believes this change is, sorry, this change in land use is not compatible with the surrounding areas, however, it poses no adverse impacts on city facilities. This request meets the intent of the strategic plan goal for growth management. On our before October 15th, 2021, the Development Review Committee reviewed this case and recommends denial. At their meeting on February 15th, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions, and it is requested that city council deny this request of ordinance number twenty, sorry, 2022-07 based upon the sixteen findings of the land development code. Next is the request for the concurrent zoning map amendment for Pennant Park. Again, the property consists of approximately 4.84 acres. The request to change the current zoning designation from RE, single-family dwelling, to P, professional, is compatible with the proposed future land use of private institutional. However, it does not appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, but will not have any adverse impact on city facilities. The request meets the strategic plan goals for growth management. On our before October 15th, 2021, the Development Review Committee reviewed this case and recommends denial. At their meeting in February, the Planning Commission recommended approval with the following conditions to create a fifty-foot buffer along the east and north property boundaries that will be inclusive of natural immature trees. To limit the height of the buildings to one-story maximum, the applicant agreed to consult with Osceola County in an effort to construct a left-turn lane and will conduct a traffic impact analysis at the site development plan stage. It is requested that city council deny ordinance 2022-08 based on the sixteen findings of the land development code. At this time, staff is available for questions, and also the applicants are in attendance tonight and are available for questions as well.
Thank you, would the applicant like to speak to these two items?
Good evening, my name is James Mangin, 2728 13th Street. Approximately four years ago, I purchased this property along with my partner Billy Rocker. We approached the city about some different ideas we had for the piece, and city staff had the recommendation of doing professional medical offices there. So upon their recommendation, we decided to pursue the zoning changes such. Previously, when we came before the city council, there was a lot of opposition from the neighboring development Pine Lake Estates. This time around, we've had a meeting in my office in person, as well as numerous email correspondence with Mr. Bob Stein, who backs up to our property. And while I believe the general consensus of the neighbors is that they don't want anything to happen there, I think that what we're proposing is going to be the best result for them. You know, essentially, at this point, there's three different directions this property could go. The first is it could be another residential development similar to Pine Lake Estates. It'd be characterized by no natural landscape buffers, twenty-five-foot building setbacks, with two-story houses backing up to their properties. Then there's the adjacent property to the south of us, which is zoned multifamily. So the subject property very well could be combined with the adjacent property for a multifamily development, you know, characterized by three-story buildings towering over their neighbors. And I think neither of these seem like good options for Pine Lake Estates. And then there's our proposal. After taking into consideration the neighbors' concerns and suggestions, we would like to place some conditions on our rezoning and land use change applications. First and foremost, like was previously mentioned, we would like to keep a fifty-foot-wide natural landscape buffer along Mesa Verde and Lake Trudy Drive. This natural buffer would remain as it is right now. It would save approximately seventy-five oak trees with a diameter of at least twelve inches, not to mention numerous other pine trees, smaller oaks, et cetera. And this would help create a shield between the professional offices and the residential areas. Second, we would have a berm at the end of the natural landscape buffer with a six-foot fence on top, and we would install a viburnum hedge facing the residential areas to help blend in the fence with the natural surroundings. Third, we would like to limit the development to only single-story buildings. And then lastly, because nobody can pronounce the name of the development, we would like to change the name to Pine Lake Professional Offices. Right now, the city's growth is exploding, and residential developments are everywhere in St. Cloud. However, the city has fallen behind with the development of support services such as medical and professional offices. The only space available in the time, available in town at the moment is unfinished buildings that require a full build-out on the inside. The properties that are turnkey get leased in weeks, if not days. And while this is only a rezoning and land use change request, we would like to address a couple of the issues that the neighbors have previously presented when it comes to the development itself. And it's important to note that the city will have to approve any plans submitted, and the plans will have to meet the city's code, as well as any conditions that are a part of the zoning and land use approval. When it comes to retention, all the watershed for the development will have to be retained on the property before being discharged, and it will all be permitted through South Florida Water Management District to meet their requirements. I know traffic is another big concern of the neighbors, and like we had talked about in the planning meeting, ideally, we would like to have a left-turn lane going into the development. However, at this stage, we don't have fully engineered plans, obviously, and so we don't know where that will stand until we do when they're submitted to the county. But the reality is, our development, our development's impact on traffic will be minimal when you're looking at the big picture in the immediate area. You know, the number of new residential units coming to that immediate area is immense. Neptune Village across the street to the north is proposing eight hundred and seventy-one single-family homes, seven hundred and thirteen multifamily units, as well as nearly three hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial space. So our project is minimal in comparison when it comes to the traffic. In addition, several residents have brought up the gas line and subsequent easement that runs through our property. This same gas line runs all over St. Cloud and through multiple developments, including the neighbor Pine Lake Estates. As part of our easement, you know, we're restricted from placing any buildings directly on top of the easement. However, we are able to put landscaping, drive aisles, and parking on top. Our plans will be required to show that no buildings will be on top of the gas line or the easement. To conclude, we believe that the proposed land use change with the proposed conditions will be the best alternatives for the neighbors. And it will keep their privacy and protect their views where I think the other options won't. Anybody have any questions for me?
If you'll hold on just a minute, we'll get back to you, okay?
Yep, no problem.
Just so I will have public comment, Robert Stein.
Name's Robert Stein, 4707 Mesa Verde Drive, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769. We've all been to this dance before, and we've heard the song, and it doesn't sound any better to those of us who live there. The last realtor that I trusted sold me my home with a wilderness view in the backyard that was going to be there on a permanent basis. So what I learned from that is I don't accept anything verbally, I want it in writing. The applicant in the past has agreed to put things into a deed restrictions and limitations beyond just what they're promising the planning committee. We need something permanent, we need a deed restriction in writing that we can see, that we know this is going to, this is how things are going to be. Talking about how things are going to be, we don't know what's going to be. In the sixteen findings there, if you read through, he's talking about doctors' offices. Doctors' offices recruiting physicians to St. Cloud and agrees, St. Cloud needs more physicians desperately. At the last planning committee, we started throwing in tax prep and realtors and title companies. And, okay, now, we had just started to get used to the idea of maybe a doctor's office, and now you're throwing in, you know, a little strip mall in my backyard. So that, you know, we have nothing to know exactly what he's thinking, what he's going to do. There are no site plans, I take that back, there are several site plans. Somewhere between five or six, up to eleven buildings. But even he'll, will admit that all those drawings are old and none of them apply anymore. So we don't know what we're being asked to agree to. We don't know what traffic we're being asked to accept. Yes, we think that a left-hand turn lane will address much of the concern, but we don't know if that's a possibility or not. This is a little bit, you know, kind of like Obamacare, you know, you're being asked to pass the bill and find out what's in it. I'm not there, I can't do that. And I would hope that you guys wouldn't be willing to do that either. This is not quite ready for primetime yet. I think that you should deny this request at this point and send the applicant back to finish gelling out are these doctor's offices, or is this a mini-mall? You know, show us what this is going to be, talk to the county, find out, can I, you know, do a left-hand turn lane there? Let the residents know what it is that you're planning, instead of changing this moment by moment by moment, because we don't, we don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Dana Hugger? Okay, forgive me.
Good evening, my name is Dana Howger, and I live at 4700 Mesa Verde Drive. So I'm here, my main concerns, really, I have two big concerns, and one of them is the traffic because I do believe it'll bring additional traffic into our neighborhood. And the other one, at least at first, was that I didn't want any apartments or high-rise buildings there. So as far as Old Canoe Creek Road, it's become very busy. It's already busy. It's difficult even at times for us, at times to get out of the subdivision. There are times when I've seen it's, the traffic is backed up from Neptune to Mesa Verde. So more traffic coming in would, you know, just be a bigger problem. And I know my husband and I, there's no left turn into Mesa Verde, so we used to go down and do the U-turn. However, the traffic's got so busy on Old Canoe Creek, we felt that was too, becoming too unsafe. So now we start coming in off Neptune, that entrance, you know, off Neptune into our subdivision. So overall, Pine Lake Estates is a very, kind of a quiet neighborhood. Really, the only people that come, drive into our neighborhood is people who live there. And we don't have any sidewalks in the neighborhood, so people are walking on the sides of the road with their dogs. I see kids walking to and from school, and that becomes more dangerous if you get a lot of traffic. Couple of years ago, a pedestrian was hit and walking on the side of the road. So, you know, that's a concern when you get a lot of traffic. And also Mesa Verde is not a through street, so it tees into Peachtree. So there's really no reason for anybody to come down that road because it really doesn't end anywhere. Some people take Pine Lake Estates or Pine Lake Drive to go to Seventeenth Street. So that's my concern, I don't want a lot of traffic, and people may be kids or people getting hit by cars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Janice Bartko?
Hello, my name is Janice Bartko, I live at 4701 Mesa Verde Drive. And I really have nothing more to add, they've covered everything. I'm very concerned about the traffic situation, that's my number one concern. We are a cut-through now, and I believe it's going to become even worse. And there's a lot of little, I mean, five and under children living in one area of Mesa Verde. I'm very concerned for those people. And, you know, these children will be riding their little tricycles and, you know. And there is no sidewalks, and people walk their dogs, and let me see. Everything is pretty much covered, I'm very opposed to this. And I hope you will help us with this situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bartko. Melissa Kennedy? Please state your name and address.
Hi, Melissa Kennedy, 1707 Pinion Circle in Pine Lake. I don't really have a whole, we've been battling this for years now, and I know, Colby, you're new to this particular subject, but most of you have heard this time and time again. It's been recommended to deny this request. We don't know what is going to happen with this property and what is going to go in. We've heard different things. The applicant makes it, makes us feel like, oh, well, it's either going to be a five-story apartment building or this better option. No, it doesn't have to be either one of those. Once this property gets rezoned from residential, it's done forever, done forever. We lose that, we lose the quiet. Put in residential homes, that's fine, make it consistent with the surrounding area. But once it gets that designation, done, gone. No more animals, no more, you know, beautiful trees. The fifty-foot buffer is nothing, nothing, that's, it's not going to help with anything. The traffic, I know everybody talks about that. You cannot put a left-turn lane going south on Old Canoe Creek to access the property. There's already a turn to go to Pine Lake Drive. There's a U-turn to come if you want to go down Mesa Verde. The county is, we're not going to be able to put in another turn lane there. That would basically be like having three U-turns right in a row. The only way to exit this property, if something does go in there, is to turn right or north onto Old Canoe Creek Road. The very first road is Mesa Verde Drive, which is used as a cut-through to get through to Seventeenth Street. Pine Lake Drive is the same way. This affects everybody who lives, it's going to affect people on Peachtree. There's going to be people coming in from Seventeenth, going down Peachtree, through Cherrywood to get to Mutter, just so they can take Mutter to Old Canoe Creek and turn right to turn right again into the property. This is going to affect the whole development. And I live on a side street, I walk my dog two times a day, my son walks with me in the evenings, we ride bikes. We don't have any sidewalks, it's dangerous, I have almost been hit. My whole family has almost been hit by cars coming through there. Stop signs, moot point. We need some caution signs, which is a totally different subject, some flashing stop signs, but maybe that's something that the residents can bring up at another city council meeting. It's very dangerous, the promises, the pie in the sky, there's nothing in concrete here. He can say anything he wants and do something different, truly, it doesn't mean anything legally, I'm going to put in a building. My gut feeling is, once this is rezoned, it's going to be dropped like it's hot, and it's going to be sold. So someone new can come in, and they don't have to fulfill any promises. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion on our motion by council, would the applicant like to speak once again?
James Mangin, 2728 13th Street, St. Cloud. You know, I think what has to be realized is that this is becoming an infill location now. So while I understand the concern of the neighbors that they want to keep their, you know, their nature preserved in their backyard, it is private property, and it will be developed at some point, one way or another. And a residential development will not have a fifty-foot natural buffer. And so I understand that the fifty feet is not as good as they have it now, but I think that that would greatly improve over any other option out there. We never agreed to any deed restrictions, that's why we're asking you to pass this with those conditions. You know, that is a part of our approval process, is that, you know, if it doesn't meet, if any plans that we do in the future doesn't meet those conditions, then it doesn't get done. You know, our concept is going to be something similar to the loop. I believe you guys got a picture in your packet, you know, we're going to do multiple buildings, you know, that will be residential in nature, they will have pitched roofs. You know, so, you know, just like those properties. You know, so, you know, just like those, those properties will have mixed use. Yes, our, our goal is to go medical, but just like over there in the Loop, both of those developments, you will have a few of other users. You'll have an accountant or what have you that, that is a professional office. We're not trying to do restaurants, not trying to do a strip center. It's, it's professional offices. That's what we're looking to do. And, and lastly, you know, there was also a conceptual plan in your packet. We, we, after talking with Mr. Stein and, and some of the other neighbors, that's when we came up with a 50-foot natural buffer. That's why that would have to get tweaked because it will eat up some more of the land. And so, but that is our basic concept. That is our basic concept that we're trying to do. So we can't do engineered plans, obviously, until we have zoning in place. But if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Councilmember Urban?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I did speak with the applicant and I also spoke with many residents and that are concerned about this. And I do understand the concern. I love Pine Lake Estates. I grew up there with, with my grandfather. I remember when they had to put the stop signs in because people were speeding through the, the neighborhood and, and so I hate to see anything built. I hate to see growth, but this is already, I did speak with staff as well and, and in my gender review, and it's already zoned for residential, which could be up to four units per acre. And I just, I think that with that type of development, there would also be a traffic issue, if not worse. There would be no buffer. I do think the concessions that were made with the planning commission were very reasonable. And so I know there, there might be some other council discussion, but I would go ahead and put forth a, a motion for approval for this with the conditions that they agreed to at the, with the planning commission.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'm not ready yet, but you brought up, there is three different, three different things, single-family, multifamily, and professional. So a single-family, Mr. Urban brought it up, you can do four, four units per acre. So close to 18, 20 houses in there, two-story, no 50-foot. I'm just so, throwing out choices out here. Multifamily, boy, if you do that one, I could see in my head, three-story, 50, at least 50 units, I would assume, something around there. You could possibly doing that. I don't know how you're going to do with the pipeline there. Or what you're proposing, to me, I guess, seems a little more appetizing if I was the one that had to back up to it. So I just wanted to put numbers to what you're proposing and what you could do at this moment if you stayed steady where you're at. And I actually did a little tour down to what the units you do own by the Loop. They're nice, nice units. I'm not sure how you're going to cram those things in there, but I just, I'm not sure all the residents in that area understand that what you're allowed to do. You do have property rights, just like everybody else has property rights, just like the neighbors, and they have the right to come up here and complain that they don't want that to happen. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Thanks.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. We've heard this quite a few times. I agree with both Mr. Urban and Mr. Askew that it's a balancing act for me. Like, something is going to go there. I know you've lived there a long time, you've enjoyed it, you've been really lucky that it hasn't been developed, you know? You're super lucky that it hasn't been developed until this point, but it's going to develop. They have property rights. Like, what's the, what's the least offensive option? I mean, for me, I like the commercial use, you know? We need commercial in the city of St. Cloud. I feel like if we never built another house in the city of St. Cloud, I would be happy about that. The 50-foot berm, I think, is, no one does that. No one gives a 50-foot berm. You know, and then to leave all of the natural vegetation and then to do, I mean, a 50-foot offset and then to do a berm, and then is it an opaque fence on top of the berm?
No, it would be a solid fence with a Viburnum hedge in front of it. So the Viburnum hedge would essentially face the, the buffer so it would kind of blend in with the, the landscape.
That it's one-story to me is super advantageous. I know if it was coming behind me, I certainly wouldn't want to have a multi-story building behind me because then, you know, you think people are looking into your backyard and just the privacy and, and things like that. This is our first reading, so we could move it forward and then ask for further information in the next reading for anything like with the left turn lane. I know that's something that's up in the air. I think we talked about this in one of the iterations we had before. Is the applicant willing to say that nothing will be outside, there'll be no outside noise, you know, like there's not going to be cafe tables outside or, you know, like playing karaoke music outside or everything is going to be contained in?
We have no problem with that. I mean, like I said, it's, it's professional offices. We're, we're not going to do restaurants there. It's, it's going to be limited to medical and professional offices, so everything will be inside.
So, I mean, when, and I guess this is from Mr. Manzera, so when, if we approve this and put all these conditions onto the property, I know that there's concern that the property could sell and the next person could do whatever they want, but if the approval contains these conditions, it stays with the land, correct?
The way this is in front of you is there's a provision in the code that allows what's referred to as a restrictive rezoning. And it allows for restrictions to be placed on. And essentially, the way it says in the code is they typically place that based on discussions in the planning commission level. And that's what, that's just how this came forward. There were a couple items that came up at the planning commission that were, that the applicant agreed to and that were put in the approval that you got from the planning commission. As I recall, they were the, the 50-foot buffer and the, and the single story. Those were the only specific conditions. There were some other ones about traffic impact studies and all that, but the two specific ones were the buffer and the, and the one-story. If you want to add, add some other ones, it's, it's, you can put them into the zoning ordinance piece, but it's going to depend on what they are, right? In other words, you mentioned the outdoor use thing. I don't see how you could put that into a zoning restriction piece. That's more of something that you would see in a, in a, in a planned unit development or PUD or, or conditional use permit. And that's not what's before you. So it's going to depend on what you're talking about in terms of specifics, whether we can incorporate it into a zoning thing. But the answer to your, your main question, if it gets into the zoning piece, then it runs with the land and the project can only be built with that zoning if it meets those restrictions.
And is the first item zoning?
First item is future land use.
And the second item is the zoning piece.
Second item is zoning.
And you're saying we can't put in there, there's no outside use?
I can, I, I think this applicant can agree to it.
Sure.
I, I think that my, if this applicant sells the property and someone else builds it, I think they, that they might come back, it might be a potential to have that challenged by a future owner. I have no doubt that if this applicant says they're going to live up to, they're going to live up to it, but I don't know how far that would carry in perpetuity, that type of restriction.
Okay. But you're saying the 50-foot buffer?
Yes.
The berm?
Yeah.
That was all in the?
That was what was discussed. I wasn't at the planning and zoning commission meeting, but I think that was all discussed.
The one-story?
The one-story definitely was.
Restriction. And then?
Lighting.
Lighting was also discussed.
I don't know if lighting was discussed.
I don't, I don't believe we discussed lighting. But can, can I just make a quick comment? You know, with our zoning, we're going for, you know, professional designation and we are fine with restricting specific uses. And I don't even know if they are under that designation, such as a restaurant or a cafe or, or something similar. I don't know if those fall under professional or not, but if they did, we're fine with restricting those specific uses to the property, if that makes sense.
Well, I guess that would be a good question for, for Melissa or somebody. Can, can you tell us what the permitted uses are under the category?
Yeah, because I feel like in one of the iterations, that was conversation about, like, making sure there wasn't loud, you know, that a automobile repair place wasn't going to come in and they're going to, you know, change tires out in the parking lot.
Restaurants do appear to be a permissible use in the professional zoning district. I can go through the list if you want me to. There, there are several. Most of them are professional office uses, but it does allow for restaurants. It allows for telephone businesses. There are a few conditional uses that include thrift stores, travel agents.
But those would require, that would require future action in the city council.
Correct. Mm-hmm. We have playfields, libraries, golf courses, museums.
Is a playfield conditional?
Yep.
It's permitted?
Mm-hmm.
So there could be a soccer field?
Parks, parkways, playgrounds. And these are all under public, so?
Yeah, that would, those would be public facilities.
They would have to be like public.
That would be like a city facility.
Okay. Don't be reading stuff off that's going to?
Well, what we could do, since you mentioned, if, since you, this is first reading and introduction again. So we could work, the staff could work with the applicant. I think the applicant has given you some indication they'd be willing to limit those uses. And then we could bring back a, a list of those that would be prohibited. You could include those in your restrictive zoning and that would carry forward on the, as attached to the property.
Yeah, I would love it to be attached to the property just because they're willing to do it and then also it gives the adjoining property some level of comfort. I'll second Mr. Urban's motion.
Thank you. I'll second. Before we vote, Mr., Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. Just for the record, you got a number of emails forwarded them to staff. So?
Did I call you, Mr. Trace? Okay.
Yeah, you said it.
Sorry, Mr. Urban.
So there's, in my mind, so first with the land use change, because that's the first item up. There, there's a lot of areas of the city that I don't necessarily agree with how the land use pattern is, but this is one of those that actually, I think, makes sense. There's commercial right next to Mutter, then multi, then higher-density residential, lower-density residential, and then Mesa Verde, which is now estate homes essentially compared to the lot sizes now. This is one of those sections that makes sense. So changing it doesn't really provide a cohesive development, in my mind, of what that area should develop as is. Commercial towards Mutter. Hopefully, that gets extended all the way through at some point in my lifetime with a traffic light at Mutter so people can safely exit those neighborhoods there instead of the, the treacherous turn that they have now. But on the land use side, I don't, I don't think it's, it's fitting for the same reasons I said two years ago and a year ago. It's not really cohesive. And then on the turn lane, I definitely wouldn't support a turn lane addition. There's one 300 feet south of it and 300 feet north of it. And then if you add another one in there, it takes out another couple hundred feet of the trees that are in the median that, you know, the county spent a ton of money to put trees in there, then they're just going to get torn out to put a turn lane in when there's another one further down. Or if a light at some point gets put in at Mutter, then that's a better and safer U-turn location. So I'm not, not in favor of the motion, but.
Mr. Matheny?
So is there maybe rest, is there a restriction on hours? So you don't, could that be a part of a motion as well? I mean, if you're worried about it becoming a strip mall or whatever and whatever that we don't want, could it be, okay, the hours operations run from eight to 10 at night or something like that? Is that a restriction you can put on a property?
That, that would be a tough one in this particular situation.
Okay.
Because we're looking, you're, you're looking at a zoning piece which really deals with the, how the property is developed and not at how it's used. And that's kind of what we're, that's kind of the difference. Like you said earlier, those kind of restrictions you typically see in a conditional use permit when hours of operation and things like that.
I also talked with the applicant as well as two residents and a number of emails from residents. I certainly understand the concerns of residents wanting to not have their peace and solitude disrupted and what they've enjoyed, but again, I also understand that this property, the property owner has a right to develop this property, as the law says. For me, the question is, what is the best use of the property? And in my opinion, having, I sat down and listened to the planning commission when they went through this and were listening to it, and that was, to me, the conclusion of where they ended up, was what is the best use of this property? And I feel that what has been proposed here, certainly with the restrictions that would come under the zoning item, I believe certainly the owner of the applicant is certainly trying to go the extra mile to have a good relationship with the community. And so with that, I think we should vote. Okay, we have a motion on ordinance number 2022-07 by Councilmember Urban, a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
No.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
That brings us to ordinance number 2022-08. Do I have a motion for the adoption of this item?
Make a motion? No.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban. I'll make a second.
Ooh. Can we add the conditions?
I'm going to give you plenty of time for discussion.
No, just add the conditions with the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, this is?
First of all, is there any discussion? The conditions that we had were the ones that were listed by the planning commission that the 50-foot buffer with the natural trees and fencing, the one-story structure, it seems to me, if I, I remember reading about lighting, the right kind of lighting being put in, of course, and a traffic study being done. Is there any, are there any other conditions?
The outside uses?
Yeah, we're going to, we'll bring back a, a list of, of restrictive uses, reduce essentially the, the permitted uses in the category based on the discussion tonight. We can't tell you specifically what they are. We need to go through the code and, and talk to the applicant.
And if we're going to have, if we're going to take the planning commission recommendations, can it be consult with Osseo County in an effort to construct a light at Mutter instead of a turn lane into this development?
Yeah, that's, it's up to the council.
To me, that'll be determined by traffic study. It's going to determine that anyway, is it not?
I, I would support that.
Okay. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Your motion?
All those to my, to my motions.
And I'll support that, okay? We done? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Trace?
No.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Brings us to council action. There are no council action items at this time. Mr. Manzera, do you have anything for us?
Just to advise the council that we did close on the Stevens Plantation property for lots one, two, four, and, and five at the, at the retail site. Closed on last Monday on that. And so all those, all that property is now gone.
Are we completely done?
No, we have, we still have them. We, you're going to hear about the Madison Grove one at your DSD meeting next week.
I was going to ask you. I guess I'll wait.
We'll, we can, well, I'll just give it, they have asked for an extension. They're going to pay the taxes moving forward. It has to do with their, their funding. They've gotten, they got approved, but there's been a challenge by one of the, the way I understand it, there were four or, there were four or five successful applicants for that and the number six that was out has challenged the scoring for the ones above them. And that, so it's put the whole thing on hold. Although the Madison Grove project, I understand, was either number one or number two on that list in the scoring, so.
So they'll get it eventually, just?
It's going to be delayed. And they've agreed, they're going to absorb the, pay the taxes on it, so won't, so that the city won't have to do anything. And then we're hoping to close, we've been talking about this next week, so you'll, I guess that meeting will be shorter. But the, the, the final piece, which is track six and eight A of the corporate campus, we're hoping that'll close in April.
Excellent.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, and I put on each of your seats the executive advisory group process partnership and ordinance manual. If you recall, back during COVID, we had executive policy group and there were some legal challenges to that. So the county actually, by ordinance, restructured to the executive advisory group. So this just outlines what that is and what their responsibilities and duties are. Secondly, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to have Chief Miller come up and give an update on our engine company that's with the strike team up in the Panhandle, how they're doing.[1789.03] doing.
Good evening, Mayor. Jason Miller, Fire Chief. The good news is, our guys are home. They made it home safe.
Wow.
All total, 15, 1800-mile trip up there, what they did up there and came back. They drove, put a lot of miles on the truck, saw a lot of fire. They didn't luckily have to fight a whole lot of fire. Florida Forest Service did an amazing job helping steer the fire away from a lot of the residential neighborhoods that they were there protecting. They got to see some really cool stuff, Jayhawks and Chinooks doing Bambi water drops on top of the fire. All total currently, that fire is around 35,000 acres, the one that they were protecting. It's called Bertha, jokingly, Big Bertha. It is burning through an area that was damaged, obviously, through Hurricane Michael. Tree tops were taken off at about 30 feet and just piled up on the ground, and that's what it's burning through. So they got two to three inches of rain yesterday, and they decided that they were going to start demobilizing some of those assets that were further south, which included us. Happy to report, no entries. So our guys did a great job. They represented us proudly. I'm actually friends with one of the division chiefs from Panama City Beach. He ran into our guys and sent me a couple pictures, and he passed along his appreciation to both myself, our guys, and the city for sending our people up there. So just wanted to give a shout out to our guys for making it home safe.
Excellent, excellent.
And lastly, Mayor and council, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I'll have limited availability. Mr. Edwards will be the acting city manager. I'm playing in the senior ZI amateur golf tournament up in Palatka, so we'll see how I do.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good luck.
That's all I have.
Councilmember Urban?
Well, first of all, I'd just like to thank the St. Cloud firefighters for being up there and all the firefighters for braving the fire up north. And secondly, I had something for city manager. I spoke to a couple of residents in the downtown area, business owners, who were having some trouble or slower than they thought should be with the permitting process. Is there any way to look into a way to maybe expedite that for these small businesses, since there's time is money for a lot of the businesses downtown and all over St. Cloud? And any way to look into a way to expedite that?
If there's no objections from council, I'll pass that with our business navigator and see if we can streamline it up a little bit more and get our businesses open a little faster.
Great, awesome. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
I think the council supports that, for sure.
Absolutely.
Is that it?
That's it for me.
Councilmember Matheny?
I don't actually have anything. It don't fall out.
No.
But is this the voting? Is this the voting thing?
No, it's not. It's an advisory group. It's back to--
Of course.
I was like, it's five.
It's back to the board. The Board of County Commissions is the only one that can take legal action, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. Quick question from Mr. Edwards. Ton of rain today, or city manager, sorry. Ton of rain today. How did the grid do with all of that? Did we get a chance to check it out?
Don, we had no complaints. I mean, usually my phone's ringing off the hook, Mr. Trace.
Yeah. So is that good? We got to do a good job of clean out ditches and whatever else we had to do?
Don Edwards, Public Works Director. I have not heard any complaints today.
Awesome. Good to hear. I figured we'd, you'd have had 37 phone calls today.
No, sir.
Awesome, great. And then I spent a couple days last week in DC with Florida Municipal Power Association, the electric conglomerate for municipal electric. Great meetings with a bunch of the congressional delegation, and I just want to thank Mr. Soto. He spent like an hour and a half sitting down and talking with us, and then met with the whole group as well. So trying to get some things motion, in motion for resiliency for the power grid, getting FEMA reimbursement quicker, help with some supply chain issues, so really, really good meetings on the Hill.
Councilmember Askew?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
We had a groundbreaking today for the beginning of our operation and maintenance facility with OUC. It was well-attended. We, they just did an excellent job, and I'm all excited about this huge investment that OUC is making into our community. I think it's going to have a long-term impact that we're going to all be pleased with, especially the nature of this facility is excellent. So we want to thank them again for their continued partnership. I received a call from Darren Soto, was telling me that there's a $2.5 million provision that's in the budget in Congress that has gotten through several layers. He was very positive about hopefully that it would continue to go through and had gone to the Senate for consideration, and so I appreciate all the work that he's done to help secure that asset for our wastewater management from the Congress. Fred Hawkins also called, and the provision that they have there that has gone through the House also. So we appreciate their efforts on behalf of the city. With that, I don't have anything else. Brings us to our information section, report section, Thursdays, March 17. There will be a city council workshop, a strategic planning session. Have we changed, is that time still correct?
That's correct.
Okay. At 3:00 PM here at City Hall, the council chambers, Thursday, March 17. There'll be a Stevens Plantation DSD meeting at 5:00 PM, or immediately following the city council workshop and strategic planning session, also here in council chambers. Thursday, March 24, there'll be a city council meeting at 6:30 here in council chambers. Saturday, this coming Saturday, March 12, there will be a Paint the Town Green St. Patrick's Day Parade at 6:30 PM. I'm told that they're going to have a seat for me with a seatbelt. We have proclamations that have been issued.